In the name of Jesus, we pray to pray for our Lord and our Savior. We pray that you will help us in this. We pray that you will help us in this. We pray that you will help us in this.
Hallelujah. We pray for you. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. 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 Hallelujah. Jesus, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. We pray that you will be with us. 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 The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. Oh, Jesus, hallelujah. He is our Saviour. 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 The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He 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 is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He 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 is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. The Lord is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. He is our Saviour. I pray that you will be with us. I pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. The Lord is our Saviour. We pray that you will be with us. The Lord is our Saviour. 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 Hallelujah. 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 The Lord is our Saviour. 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 Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. The Lord is our Saviour. The Lord is our Saviour. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. We pray that you will be with us. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. We pray that you will be with us. Praise the Lord. We pray that you will be with us. 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 Let us all rise and worship the Lord by singing a couple of holy songs. We pray that you will be with us. 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 We pray that you will be with us.
I don't hear anything. Praise the Lord. There are so many reasons to be standing here and so many reasons to come before him and praise him because we're here of course because of our conference. We're here to celebrate our conference and give thanks to God for all that he has done but it's not just about the conference. It's not just about the fact that so many people were there. It's not just about the fact that we are great speakers. We get anointed worship leaders. It's not about any of that. It's about the fact that God was able to use every single one of us. That he was able to humble ourselves before him and allow for his spirit to just overcome. His spirit was just overwhelming in that place. And whatever has been on your mind this entire week, just come before him and remember that conference. Remember the fact that he proved himself to be faithful once again. Every single time he had anything, he proved himself to be faithful. And that is the God that we serve. We serve a faithful God. We serve a God that is higher than any other name. We serve a God that is just higher than any other power. And if you are confident in that, if you believe that, if you've seen that in your life, this is just another opportunity to come before him and say thank you, God. Thank you for who you are. Thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for the things that you will do. I just worship you today, God. Thank you, Jesus.
What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ my King. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. I'm just saying that out. What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ my King. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. You are the one that begins. Where we love and want most. For it more. In glory and peace. Now in the day you are Christ. What a beautiful name it is. There's no better name. Every voice, every heart screams. Oh, too hard, too hard, too hard. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. I didn't want heaven. You didn't want heaven without us. So Jesus, you brought heaven down. My sin was made. My sin was made your lamb's baby. What a silverfish. Now, what I wanted for Jesus. What I wanted for Jesus. The name of Jesus Christ my King. What I wanted for Jesus. Nothing compares to this. What I wanted for Jesus. The name of Jesus. I got it one more time. What I wanted for Jesus. What I wanted for Jesus. The name of Jesus Christ my King. The name of Jesus Christ my King. What a wonderful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. The Lord could not hold. The hail torn before you. Silence of the birds. I'll sing and pray. The heavens are rolling. Angels are calling. For you are raised to rise. Sing it out one more time. The Lord could not hold. The rain of the Lord. Silence of the birds. I'll sing and pray. The heavens are rolling. Angels are calling. For you are raised to rise. The Lord could not hold. The Lord could not hold. The hail torn before you. Silence of the birds. I'll sing and pray. The heavens are rolling. Angels are calling. Ready, 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 ready. To rise up. You have no rung. You have no rong. You have no need for. Now and forever. You are raised. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the day of the Lord. The powerful. The powerful name it is. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. My King. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. You have no rung. You have no need for. Now and forever. You are raised. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the day of the Lord. The powerful name it is. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. My King. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. The powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. Oh, my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. And as sun comes up. It's a new day dawning. It's time to sing Your song again. Whatever may pass. And whatever lies before me. Let me be saved when the evening comes. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. And you're rich in love. And just go to heaven. Your name is great. And your heart is kind. For all your goodness, I will keep on saving. Ten thousand reasons for my heart to find. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name, my soul. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Oh, I worship Your holy name. I will worship Your holy name. And on that day. When my strength is spared. The end draws near. And my time has come. Still, my soul will sing Your praise. Unending. Ten thousand years and then forevermore. Let's sing that again. Let's go. And on that day. When my strength is spared. The end draws near. And my time has come. Oh, still, my soul will sing Your praise. Unending. Ten thousand years and then forevermore. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Bless the Lord. Oh, bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship His holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. I worship Your holy name. Oh, I worship Your holy name. God, I worship Your holy name. Yes. Worship Your holy name. Oh, I worship Your holy name. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord. Bless the Lord.
I worship Your holy name, King. Take them all to the Lord. I worship Your holy name. His holy name. Take them all. Take them. All the world worship Him. Our God. Praise our God. Hallelujah! He is the worship of the Lord. Hallelujah! 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 Praise His holy name. Amen. Hallelujah! 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 This is a prayer. None of these words are made for this. We have this holy process. Hallelujah! 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 We are in warfare. We are in a war. We are in a war. I think we are in a war. We are in a war. Praise the Lord! Hallelujah! We are in a war. 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 Hallelujah! Praise the Lord! We are in a war. 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 Joseph, our national president, Joseph. Okay, sorry. I'm going to go to the bathroom. I'm going to go to the bathroom. I'm going to go to the bathroom. We are in a war. 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 Praise the Lord! Welcome to our aging family. May the Lord continue to bless you and use you for the expansion of God's kingdom in this country and the edification of God's people. May the Lord be with you. We are in a war. 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 We are in a war.
Praise the Lord! We are in a war. 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 We are in a war.
Praise the Lord. Welcome to our Hallelujah. We are in a meeting. We are in a meeting. Hallelujah. I was in a meeting. I was in a meeting. In nineteen eighty six. I got. I accepted the Lord Jesus Christ. Then I studied at Graceburg College. Eighty nine, I graduated. I was working in Operation Mobilization eighty nine to ninety two. In Uttar Pradesh. And God gave me a vision about Uttar Pradesh. And ninety two, when I came back to Kerala. I was pastoring there in Cochin Tevara. Then I got an opportunity to study in Christ for the Nation. So, I came to Christ for the Nation ninety six. Got graduated there. Then I went back to North India in ninety seven. Ninety seven, February. We started a ministry called Kalvari Ashram Seva Sakha. So, since then, last twenty three years. We are there in Greater Noida, which is very close by Delhi. Arabic means for Uttar Pradesh. That is our Russian. That is the most populated state in India. Around two hundred fifty million people, they live there. I work with my family and we have some people. We are together, we are working there. And we do trade. And this was an opportunity God gave me. This was nineteen ninety eight. I came to New York and I was with the pastor Thomas Abraham for one Sunday. Anyway, that was a long story. So, just came back Houston. This is my first time. I mean, I came to Houston in ninety six to see Lake Wood Church. But visiting churches, this is the first time. So, pray, I will be here for one week. If somebody wants to know more about our ministry. Later, you can just come and get a prayer card from us. Once again, thank you. Thank you, Pastor, for giving me the time. God does you.
Thank you, pastors. Thank the Lord. Continue to use you in your respective places. Or give you God. We are giving thanks to God. We are giving thanks to God. Pastor of Manuel. Some of our church. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Expected pastors. Church members from different churches of the A G fellowship. Visiting pastors. And to my family. I greet you all in precious name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. It's such an honor to be here. Right before we start. I just want to thank the president of this A G fellowship. Pastor Thomas Abraham. And also the local secretary, brother. Oh, he's, I'm sorry. And also the local secretary, brother George Matthew. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak from God's word. I believe that the Lord would speak towards us from his word. As I was praying, the Lord laid a few scriptures in my heart. And I've been praying, I've been burdened. Especially with what has been happening in the great city of Philadelphia. Where I minister as a youth pastor of a church. Things that are happening. I spent two and a half hours this morning. Just spending time alone with Pastor Nishkavala. Just talking about things that's happening in the Christian world. Especially among the Pentecostal churches. I spent almost forty five minutes with Pastor John Thomas this morning. Also discussing certain things that's happening in our community. And it's, I think it's needed that we address certain issues. That we come back to the word of God. That once again, we refresh our minds. That we truly understand who Jesus Christ is. That we truly understand our calling. That we truly understand what we ought to do. That we truly understand the mission of a local church. That we truly behave according to the word of God. We did not come back to the Lord and his ways. We will be embarrassed. We will be made a laughing stock. We will be made, or we will be humiliated in front of our community. And so, with great burden. And with sincere love for every church in this country. I want to take a few moments to share from God's word. Let's go, Zion. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this wonderful time, Lord Jesus. I pray for myself. I pray for the people here, Lord. I am yours. The word is yours. The people are yours. The anointing belongs to you. Everything is for your glory. Speak your word, oh Godfather. Let the word be sent like a fire to burn what it has to burn. Let the word be sent like a sword to cut what it has to cut. Let the word be sent like a hammer to break what it has to break, Lord. Father, I pray. Plant this word, this seed in fertile soil. Let your people go back home and meditate upon this word of God. I give you all the glory. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. As I was just leaving home, I was looking on Facebook. I came across a post. It was posted by the lead pastor of Zion Church Dallas, Pastor Shanti. And speaks about how to kill a church. How to kill a church. I would like to present it as how to kill the spirituality of our church. He says, it says here, don't evangelize. Regularly criticize the leaders. Can be the leadership of the church or the pastors of a church. Regularly criticize the leaders. Attend, fail to attend services. Refuse to volunteer. Whatever happens in church. People sometimes stubborn, they refuse to volunteer. Neglect the youth of our local church. Thirty, forty years, we still touch on them to be youth, youth, youth. Complain more than encourage. Love to complain, but don't like to encourage. Stop taking the Bible seriously. You don't even take the Bible seriously. We don't even bring a Bible to church anymore. Value personal preference over souls. I can add so much more. It can be egos. Church politics, all these things together. We can kill the spirituality of a local church. And now, God is speaking to us, saying, come back to me. When you study, it's a good thing to go back home and study the book of the Acts of the Apostles. It's a good thing to once again refresh your memory on how churches did church. How they did ministry. How they survived. How they thrived. Spiritually, how they grew. And also in numbers, how they grew numerically. How they grew. They grew. They were active churches, not passive churches. Things were happening. God was moving. Miracles were happening. Everybody was excited about Jesus. They loved to go to church. Everybody had a fellowship. They had partnership. They loved each other, took care of each other. That's what the Bible says in Acts seven two. They were so devoted to God's word. Devoted to fellowship. Devoted to prayer. Devoted to each other. There was coynonia. There was a great bond of fellowship. God was so pleased. His people were devoted to God's word. He started moving, moving, and moving in these local churches. Missionaries being raised. Young people stepping up for ministry, hallelujah. God was with them and mighty miracles were happening. They started, God started confirming his word through signs and wonders. Now, we are living in a different time. So, what was a secret of church growth for them? I believe what all the leaders, the pastors, the leaders of those churches. What they did was they carefully walked in the path of Jesus Christ. They knew his identity. They knew his mission, hallelujah. They knew what God had called them to do. They did not focus on all the distractions. They were not there to please people. What they did was to please God. They took a firm stand for the word of God. They followed the footsteps of the ministry, the pattern of ministry of Jesus Christ. That's the reason why God was with those churches. Whenever they were in Christianity spread, the gospel was being preached. Miracles were happening. Churches were not humiliated and embarrassed because God was with them. Hallelujah. What is happening now? Church politics, church splits, so called so many things. People clinging onto chairs for a position. Trying to have all these conferences, doing so many things, acting in the flesh. Where is the coynonia? Where is the genuine love? God is calling us that there be a change in our lives. Let us come back to the word of God. Let's come back to Jesus Christ. Let's do what God has called us to do. The great things would happen in this great city of Houston. So, quickly, in maybe fifteen minutes, I just want to go and speak certain things from God's word. Don't have time to read the scripture, but think about this. In Luke chapter four, verse fifteen down. That's what I've been teaching in our church for the past one and a half months. See, Jesus comes, Luke chapter four, verse fifteen down. You can read. He comes to his home synagogue in Nazareth. And he's been handed over a scroll. He finds the passage from the passage of Isaiah, chapter sixty one. He reads it before the congregation. He speaks about, he said, this is being fulfilled today. The moment they heard, they were astonished. Who is this guy? Speaking about what Isaiah prophesized about the Messiah. Jesus said, this has been fulfilled right before your eyes. What he was trying to say is, hey, I'm the Messiah that Isaiah spoke about. Isaiah prophesized about me and I am the Messiah. And they were astonished. Then they were filled with wrath. They kicked him out of the synagogue. They pushed him far away to a cliff. And they wanted to push him and kill him. But Jesus, because of the favor of the Lord, was upon him. Moved in their midst. But look at what he said there. He said, the spirit of the Lord is upon me. The Lord has anointed me. He said, the Lord has sent me to preach the good news to the poor. And to heal the broken hearted. So many things he speaks about. Number one, his identity. That my father has sent me. That I am anointed by my father. And he speaks about his ministry. He says, the Lord has sent me for a purpose. He has anointed me to do certain things. And that is to preach the gospel to those who are poor in their spirit. I'm sent by the Lord to find those who are crushed in their spirit. And to heal the broken hearted people. I'm going to go and minister to those who are in captivity. I'm going to proclaimly body to them. I'm not just going to proclaimly body, but I'm going to set them free. I'm going to give hope to those who don't have hope. Joy for those who are mourning. And to say that this is acceptable, you're God's favor. So, he was speaking, number one, about his identity. Number two, about his ministry. What the Messiah is going to do. His mission, his ministry was explained there. And you see, Jesus formed a team of disciples. Jesus walked with them so closely that these disciples, who later became apostles. Were commissioned by the Lord to follow the footsteps of Jesus Christ. And so, after Jesus Christ ascended to heaven. These people, the apostles, the disciples, hundred and twenty of them sat there, waiting for the fire to come. And they started moving out of Jerusalem. They started going out, preaching the gospel, doing what Jesus had told them to do. Whatever challenges that were, that happened in their lives. They were focusing on Christ and his ministry. So, look at this. Jesus, whatever ministry he started, he handed it over to this team. The early church, they were not doing something new. They were not, said not. Can you repeat after me? Not. They were not, said, oh no. They were not. They were not doing something new. They were simply following the ministry or the pattern of Jesus Christ. So, whatever Christ started, they were just continuing the mission of Jesus Christ. So, what happens? Wherever they went, they closely followed, number one, the identity of Christ. Number two, the ministry of Christ. This is what we got to follow too. The apostles did that and they saw growth in their church members. They saw growth in the life, the spiritual life of their church members. They also saw the numeric growth, the church growing in numbers. We must not be focusing on numeric growth. Our main priority must be on spiritual growth. The relationship, the vertical relationship with the people and God must be strengthened. It must be a healthy relationship that everybody has with their Lord. When that is taken care of, everything else will fall in place. So, I want to just tell you the simple truth that these churches. That you read in the Acts of the Apostles. Those churches, they are the leaders. What they did was they made the main thing, the main thing. The main thing was to follow the ministry or the pattern of Jesus Christ ministry. They simply followed in his footsteps, did what he did, that's all. And so, God is calling us in this generation to follow Jesus Christ. Follow his identity. Make sure you remain in Christ. And whatever you do, make sure you do it for his glory. Make sure you are doing it in the pattern of Christ. When you do it according to his will. You will see the blessing of the Lord come upon whatever word you do. The smallest effort that you do for the kingdom of God. When it's done with the right motive, in the right pattern of the ministry of Jesus Christ. You will see the blessing of Christ come upon you. So, what these churches did is they followed the pattern of Christ ministry. Quickly, eight things that are close, hallelujah. Number one, Jesus Christ had a very personal and intimate relationship with the Holy Spirit and with his Abba Father. What we don't have nowadays, we don't have. We have so many people, talented people, so many talented people in the church. But just because they need worship, just because they are on the ploppin', just because they are on the stage. Doesn't mean, doesn't mean they have an intimate relationship with Jesus Christ. What we need is people. We need church members, number one, who have a personal, active, deep or intimate relationship with God. Hallelujah. That is what we need to pray for. That is what we need to emphasize in our churches. We need volunteers. We don't want so many talented people. We want spiritual people, dedicated people. We want people who fear the Lord. Hallelujah. Those who are disciplined in church, we must support them. We must raise them as leaders. We must train them to be leaders of the next generation. Hallelujah. It will mess up the church. It will embarrass our church. It will embarrass our Pentecostal community. We need to support people. Yes, we got to train people, but we got to train the right people. And elevate them, support them, pray. But make sure the ones that you support have a personal, an active relationship, a deep relationship with Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ had a very deep, intimate, personal relationship with his Father. Every day he prayed. Every time he preached, he said, my father, my father, my father, my father. Hallelujah. Make sure, church, young people, make sure you have a deep, active relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. Number two, Jesus Christ responded to his Father's call. In that passage, he says, the Lord has sent me. I did not come on my own. My father has sent me, which means my father has called me. He has chosen me. He has commissioned me. He has ordained me. He has anointed me. He has sent me and I have responded to his call. Respond to the call of God. Young people, let me tell you, hallelujah. Don't focus on any person. Focus on the Lord who has called you. If you are a born again child of God, I want you to know there is a calling upon your life. Do not waste your time. Do not mess up your life. Don't waste your life. Run to God, the God who has called you. The call of God is a high call. The call of God is a holy call. The call of God is a heavenly call. Make sure you respond to the call of God. Your pastor prepares. Your pastor prays. Your teachers, the Sunday school teachers, they pray, they come and give the word of God. And God is calling you through them, hallelujah. He is speaking through the voices of your parents, your teachers, hallelujah. Your Sunday school teachers, your pastors. God is calling you. Make sure you respond to the call of God. Hallelujah. Thirty one years old, being shot. A life that is wasted. You go to the cemetery, you will see lives that have been wasted. People who messed up their call. People who walked with fire and messed up their calling because they started following the world. Hallelujah. Make sure you come back to the Lord. I prayed with you this evening. Come back to the Lord. Respond to the call of God. If you're a born again child of God, there is a call upon your life. Respond to the call. Don't just keep doing what others are doing, hallelujah. Be different, be different. Sit at the feet of the Lord, understanding to the Lord. Why am I here? Why am I here on planet Earth? What is my calling of God? Help me discover what is my call. I want to serve you. I want to follow your voice, oh God. I don't want to mess up my life. Jesus responded to his Father's call. Jesus prepared for the ministry that was set before him. Something I meant? Jesus prepared his life. Till he was thirty, what was he doing? He was faithful to his parents. Number two, he was faithful in the local synagogue. Every time he went there for prayers, in the local synagogue. When he turned thirty, he left everything and walked for sixty to seventy miles just to take baptism. He was preparing himself for the great mission, hallelujah. From there, the Bible says, "Luke four, verse one," said that the Holy Spirit led him into the wilderness. He fasted and prayed for forty days and forty nights. Before the ministry started, he prepared himself, hallelujah. You got to prepare. If the Lord is calling you for something great, make sure you sit in the presence of the Lord. Make sure you pray. Make sure you fast. Make sure you worship the Lord. Make sure you read the word of God. Meditate the word of God. Prepare your heart for the great things for which God has called you. Don't fool, don't fool the type of fool the church. Don't play the church. Don't play church. Don't simply get up on the stage just to please people and parents. Please do us a favor as pastors. Don't push your children up on the stage. You're messing up their life. Make sure, make sure, make sure that they have the right relationship with the Lord. Make sure they prepare their hearts before they come to Sunday service, before they lead worship. Make sure they have prepared their hearts before they stand up on the pole, but hallelujah. It'll mess up a church. It'll mess up the ministry. It'll mess up the growth of a church, hallelujah. This is a response to what God is giving us, hallelujah. Jesus was equipped with the power of the Holy Spirit. There are so many Pentecostal children, hallelujah, who don't even believe in the baptism of the Holy Spirit. They don't believe in speaking in tongues. They don't believe in the Pentecostal fire, hallelujah. Jesus, even though he was hundred percent holy, completely divine, hundred percent human, yet Jesus Christ, he fasted and prayed, and he submitted himself to be filled with the power of the Holy Ghost. That's why Luke chapter four, verse fourteen says, "And he returned from the children full or filled with the power of the Holy Spirit." Full of power. So before Jesus Christ started his ministry, he made sure he prepared himself. Number two, he equipped himself. He was filled with the power of the Holy Spirit. Acts ten thirty-eight says, "And God anointed Jesus Christ with Jesus of Nazareth, with the Holy Spirit and with the power of the Holy Spirit." Hallelujah. Make sure you are equipped with the power of the Holy Spirit. Jesus ministered with a... Five more minutes. Jesus ministered with a different perspective. We ought to be different as pastors, as teachers. We must be different, hallelujah. The needs are different. It's a different generation. Make sure we are more patient with this generation, hallelujah. There were so many rabbis in Galilee. There were so many rabbis in Nazareth, yet Jesus Christ, he was so different. He was very different. Sinners loved to come to Jesus. Jesus loved to be, Jesus loved to hang out with sinners. He built a relationship with people. You know why? Because Jesus valued people, and Jesus valued relationships. I repeat that once again. Jesus valued people. Jesus valued relationship. Number three, I can say this too. Jesus valued the needs of people, hallelujah. While all the rabbis were busy, so busy in the synagogues. Jesus was found on the mountain peaks, hallelujah, on the mountaintops. He was found in a marketplace with common people, with sinners. He was associated with so-called people, the sinners. Nobody wants to surround, nobody wants to be surrounded by the blind people. Who are you handing out in your ministry? Look at what Jesus says in Isaiah sixty-one. The pastor was written about him. "The Lord has sent me to minister to the poor." Who wants the spiritually poor people? We always love to crowd around theologians. Who wants the humble poor in spirit? Who wants the blind? He has sent me to give sight to the blind. Who wants to be surrounded by blind people? He has sent me to proclaimly body to the captives. Who wants the captives? Hallelujah. Who wants to be among the brokenhearted? Jesus said, "The Father has sent me to bring healing to the brokenhearted." Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Jesus valued people. Even those who were marginalized by the society, Jesus had a heart for them. He cared for them. He loved them. He wanted to spend time with them. So we must come back to the ministry of Jesus Christ. We must come back to the pattern of the ministry of Jesus Christ. We have to show grace. We shall have to show mercy in our churches. We got to pour out our heart for the people. We got to cry and pray and be with those whom people have labeled and rejected. We have to find such people. You have to find those people and be different. Be like Jesus, hallelujah. I love Paul's style of ministry. Reaching now to people, hallelujah. Building bridges, not staying within the four walls of traditions. Traditions cannot save you. Have to step out and be like Paul. Be different in your ministry. Be different in your perspective. Be different like how Jesus Christ, he was different, hallelujah. And Paul understood how different Jesus was from other rabbis. Be like Jesus. Jesus had a kingdom purpose. Had a kingdom purpose, his master. He had a kingdom purpose. What was the kingdom purpose? It says, "To preach." Not just to preach, to demonstrate the power of the gospel of Jesus Christ. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. The kingdom purpose was to proclaim the gospel. We have to come back to the Lord. We have to demonstrate the power of the gospel to, hallelujah. Amen. Praise. That's what God's calling us. Come back to our roots. It all starts with Jesus Christ. The early church, they witnessed the miracles. Signs and wonders happened. Why isn't God doing those signs and wonders? You see, has he turned deaf? Has he become blind? It's because of us. God is calling the church. Come back. Do what Jesus Christ did. Be different like him. Proclaim the glorious gospel and demonstrate the power of this glorious gospel. Let me say a word for you. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this blessed time. Father, the message might not be hard, but this was your message, oh God. I pray, Father, you would use every church in your city, and we would not be embarrassed. As your children, we would never be embarrassed before the secular community, your God. Help us to understand, we are chosen. We are special to you. We are the church, your bride, oh God. Let there be no sin in our hearts. Let there be no sin in our churches. And whatever we do, whatever we think we are doing, oh God, help us to, oh God, examine our lives, our ministry, and help us to come back to you, Lord Jesus. Bless all our churches in the city, especially our AG fellowship. Grow the fellowship. Let this be a fellowship that honors your name in word, in thoughts, in deeds, and also in our ministry, oh God. That our churches be moral churches in this great city of God, in Jesus' name. Amen. 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 Thank you, Lord. This is the time when we all are in the same room. We are going to take the children of the AG fellowship. I will do the same. Rashar will take the children of the AG fellowship. I will do the same. Aaron, come. Abigail, come. We are all in the same room. We are going to take the children of the AG fellowship. Hallelujah. 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 Hallelujah.[1265.38] Jangulayayavane mave bhakka yanivide Kudulla moudur malim nee paadi ruppekam Kagheladham kekkalai kunyaa tikkaane Kaagulakalam thirarai rooshin saachigale Aayaadilla thirsa preetha adam thirarai Rooshimvarichava nee vekam kaana meegathil Neeyal thirsa nadeenam chidi choomraave Duhalan jangalum malim thoodi kuttinne Kaavitha mouda kari magalai bhakka mookraave Palumee thinnudan mee kathan neenam mitmaada Duhyatshakthi naruvindhi bhakka mookaave Duhalan jangalum malim thoodi kuttinne Kagheladham kekkalai kunyaa tikkaane Kaagulakalam thirarai rooshin saachigale Kayayoo vala pattiyo unthaa inakke Viva necham pilgidum bhakka kasike Ni pootti kattukala chidi choidake Neeyalal ennu nee koori lundanlo Kagheladham kekkalai kunyaa tikkaane Kaagulakalam thirarai rooshin saachigale Aayaadil nee kandinum dutha senakale Avaluganadu villan priyanee kaana meegathil Aayaadil nee kandinum dutha senakale Avaluganadu villan priyanee kaana meegathil Aayaadil nee kandinum dutha senakale Avaluganadu villan priyanee kaana meegathil Kagheladham kekkalai kunyaa tikkaane Kaagulakalam thirarai rooshin saachigale Hallelujah, thank you Jesus.
Hallelujah. After just a little prayer, we will pray. Okay, prayer. We have been praying for a long time. Then we will pray for the students. Our children are in the name of Jesus. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. If they are not in the name of God, we will pray. Thank you, Jesus.
Before the prayer, I would like to say that KJFN is a very important organization. After this, I would like to say that One minute will be taken. After this, according to the Commissary Secretary, Brother Benoy Phillip, Our president will be taken. After this, ladies even coordinator Sajamon George, Ladies coordinator Sushma Eedhavam, Local representative, Brother Orgis Pachaman, Local committee, Local coordinator, John Sidani, Secretary John Lucas, Trisha George Mathew, Our maximum hour of minutes will be taken. After this, our team will be written. After this, I will hand over my mic to youth and youth coordinator, Tengiril Kapove and appreciate our youth team also. Then closing prayer, benediction, and blessing of the Lord. Let us praise him. The next program will be fixed. The original coordinator, Brother Commissary Secretary, X, will be taken.
Our God is an awesome God, is that right? Our God is a good God. He is a God who does things. I am happy to see your smile. I always say that my second city is Houston, but I don't know it's a second city. Probably it's the first city. I do work out of Houston also. Because I do work in Dallas and also in Houston. So last time, you know, we had a conference. This conference, and other conferences, I had a conference. It was two years ago. I was looking at hotels. But before that, the conference was with us. His grace was with us. His grace is the only one. How many times I have been to a conference, and the Lord has blessed us. I am grateful. You know, I am grateful for all the merit of the Lord. We should all be grateful for the merit of the Lord. How many times I have been to a conference, and the Lord has blessed us. In the past, I have been to a conference, and Pastor Thomas Abraham. And in the past, he worked very hard, along with Tenny and Amama. As a family, they worked very hard for this conference for, I think, for two years. Actually, in Mumbai, you know, I have been praying. And then last two years, they worked very hard. And Benoy Phillip, he was the National Secretary. And Benoy and his family also prayed and worked very hard for this conference. Very well job, you know. Job was very well done, you know. So God bless you, Benoy. And Sajamon George is the event coordinator. Was event coordinator. And many, many nights, you know, we were going to a conference. I don't know. Sajamon, he was very brave. He has been praying for Sajamon's sake. You know, David Johnson, Justin Sabo, who has been a member of the National Executive Committee. Local committee, John Sidani. In the past years, we were going to a hotel in Mumbai. Amami, I was also going. You know, he was very brave. He was, you know, grateful for the merit of the Lord. You know, John Lucas, the local secretary, Georgie, local Trisha, they were very brave. They were very brave. They were very brave. All the members of the local executive committee, they were grateful for the merit of the Lord. They were grateful. They were grateful. They were grateful. I don't know. But if you are grateful for the merit of the Lord, I want to shake your hands and, you know, just personally, actually say thank you to you, but I don't have the time to do that. So I want you to do something. I want you to just shake the hand next to the person sitting next to you. You have been grateful for the merit of the Lord. I have said to him, "You have been grateful for the conference." "You have been grateful." You have been to a conference. At least you attended the conference, right? You are blessed. Okay, but there is no one who has been grateful. There is no one who has been grateful. No. You have been grateful for the merit of the Lord. You know, I am grateful. Here are local pastors and churches. I need to take one minute and then actually appreciate that. Here are pastors in Houston and churches. I was the secretary of the conference. I came here to meet the pastors in church. They are meeting the pastors in church. They are meeting people. I feel very brave. Just because of what happens, I feel sincere, genuine support. Churches and pastors in the city are important. So I really want to actually take the time to appreciate the local churches and pastors for supporting this conference. Only because of your support, this made it possible. God made it possible, but at the same time, you know, I was grateful for the merit of the Lord. So the only reason this conference was successful is because of the local pastors and local churches and local committee. It was, you know, what he saw. Unique event with unity from all the members in this city. And I want to actually appreciate all of you. One more time, once more, I want to appreciate. Can we clap our hands and just appreciate all the pastors and the people in the church? And I want to just stop here, you know. One of the highlights that everybody said, I know, there are so many highlights, the choir and all the other things, but one of the highlights that I heard was the Indian food. Is that right? I think it was really good. I think in the hotel, one of the things was, you know, when we were talking to the hotel people, they were really, in the beginning, opposed to that, bringing any food from outside. So we were really, really, really stuck. Because when we went there and signed the contract, the menu was actually not even given to us. For just, you know, literally about three weeks prior to the conference, when we asked for the menu, they sent us the menu. And that menu was really a bad one. And we were really, really, just kind of scared. And we didn't know what to do. We were able to change the menu with the hotel, but at the same time, we asked to bring in an Indian food from outside. Initially, it was not a possibility, but with the prayer and with the support from the hotel, it made it possible, and that was one of the highlight. Other than the spiritual food. The spiritual food was great, but physically, Indian food was on a highlight. I know many brothers over here sitting, they helped and they supported that, and that was a great help. You know, I can stand here for the next, you know, thirty minutes. And I know Pastor, I read a long list. Pastor to a legal district of Waichu. So in the name of the Lord. So I am just going to cut it down and finish it. But one more thing. I have been to a conference, the fifth conference in the Executive Committee. How many years? Every conference, I have been standing on the stage. I have said to my pastor, I have stood on the stage, and I have not been able to speak. So this conference, Saturday night, National Executive Committee, they said, "Brother, I have been speaking." So I was hesitant. I felt a bit frustrated. But I said, "The Lord is with us." I asked him. I asked him. "The Lord is with us." "This conference is impossible." "It is free." "We are grateful for this conference." "He is with us." "He is with us." "You know, he gave his hand to him." "He looked up and then..." "It is not minimum." "He is with us." "I am grateful." "So my pastor said, "If you are grateful, then you are not grateful." "You are not grateful." "He is not a coward." "He is not a bad person." 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 "I am grateful for the merit of the Lord." "He is with us." "I hope the Lord will bless you." "He is with us."
I feel trapped inside, bound by the chains of life, caught up in my own pride, blinded by the pain and strife. Home falling in the dark, longing just to be set free, even lost in his love and his heart, screaming, "Can't get enough of him!" Oh, why? Nobody! Yeah! Yeah! Hallelujah! You choose me! 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 Why choose me? Miracles of ways. There is a heart. Hallelujah, oh Señor! Hallelujah, oh Señor! What is it? The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us. Coming to pass, because if God speaks it, then it is true. Hallelujah to the Lamb of God. Why you still be? You want a fresh touch from God right now. You want to speak a new language. You want, you want the Holy Ghost. You are baptized with the Holy Ghost.
You have been praying for a minute. What have you done? Have you done anything? Have you been praying? Where is it? A new salvation is coming. The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us.
The Spirit is with us. The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us.
The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us. The Lord is with us.
We have to have the baptism of Holy Spirit.
Every time, I have been praying for a long time. 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 This conference is important. It is a part of everything. I believe. It is my family's glory. So if you are grateful for the merit of the Lord, I will say it. Conference is a great thing. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been chatting on Facebook. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I appreciate it. The merit of the Lord is great. I have been praying for a long time. It is a great joy. I have been praying for a long time. 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 My mind, this conference, everyone says. There are a lot of people who are doubting. This is what my mind thinks. The Lord is with us. One of them is a pastor. Two pastors. They are everywhere. They are grateful for the merit of the Lord. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. If there is a small town, whatever it is, I will say. I have a dream. I have a dream. I have a dream. Eight things. Local committee, national committee, Trisha, all. I have been praying for a long time. 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 Whatever it is, we will pray. I have been praying for a long time. It is sponsors. A sponsor in a festival. It is a very important event. Sponsors. We will pray for Indian food. Whatever it is, we will pray. We will pray for sponsors. This conference, we all know. They have a home PC video, home video. Their business has an advertisement. We have been paying for them. They are paying for our conference. It is a charity. Our family, when our sons come, or other things happen, we support them. That is what sponsors are. Who is the mega sponsor? Brother Jimmy, Jimmy Joseph and family. The bottom of my heart. We just want to thank you. You guys did amazing job. In the previous examples again, that one is, it's a blessing for your business. I am telling you, there are so many kids got, you know, full of the Holy Spirit. And so many people got baptized. All this, you know, the blessing in the heart is going to be your business and your family life. God bless you. I have been praying for my family, Sigma, Sunny and Kudub. They have been praying for a long time. Just because of the prayer, they have been praying. 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 My family, I wish you all the best. I hope you will be grateful for the merit of the Lord. I wish you all the best. My prayers are answered.
Thank you, Lord. I have been praying for a long time. 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 I am happy. I have been praying for a long time. Our lives are good. If we have a good life, our hearts are happy. I am grateful for this conference. I have been thanking you. Everyone is grateful. We have been grateful for this conference. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. The Lord has blessed us. I enjoy this conference. He is with us. He is a great teacher. He is with us. I am grateful. I am grateful. I have been praying for a long time. 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 I am happy. I am grateful for the merit of the Lord.
Praise the Lord. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. I have been praying for a long time. Eighteen hundred and fifty percent. The Lord is with us. I have been praying for a long time. This conference is very good. I have been praying for a long time. 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 As I have said, I have seen it. I have been praying for it. I have been praying for it. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference. I am grateful for all of you who have come to this conference.
Thank you.
Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone. I was so jealous and I am still jealous for the AG conferences. My spiritual identity is partly built through these conferences over all these years I regularly attended. They had the privilege to work with our beloved Thomas Warkis in so many conferences and I learned a lot of things from him. I thank the Lord that he gave us a blessed conference in this city and it was a great success by the prayer and support of all the men of God and the women of God. I take this opportunity and the time for Pastor Thomas Abraham and his national and local team, they worked very hard and God made it a good success. And any conference, any event in Houston, it always will and it will be a success. Praise the Lord. And I thank the Lord for all the blessings that he received through this conference and I appreciate all the people who were involved in this conference. And get ready, the money spent for this conference is not a loss, so get ready for the next year's conference which is going to be in Oklahoma. This AG conference will be held in the Grand Canyon.
Local committee, local president, John Lucas, George Martin.
Local committee, local pastor John Sedarian, John Lucas, George Martin. This conference is... First of all, I want to say, I was in the church. 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 Conference is... I was in the church. Some of the faithful members are in the church. I was in the church. I was in the church. I was very grateful. I was very grateful. Another one, the president. Conference has invited some young people.
Today, the president of the conference, he was very controlled. There was a meeting. Our leader, the president, he was very proud of us. 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 And you, we are leading the party. We are giving you the best. And if you want to go, I will give you the best. A good leadership, a proud leader. I was very proud of him. Praise the Lord. I was in the church. I was in the church. I was in the church. And I was very proud of him. Every thing, a peaceful, unity thing. Every little touch, every little gesture, every little hand, every little watch. Even unity is the strength. Praise the Lord. This district, this local committee, has given us a lot of things. Anything, anything, whatever is needed, they will give us. They are in the church. They are struggling in the house. They are doing things. They are giving us a lot of things. They are giving us a lot of things. And they are giving us a lot of things. I am grateful. The president, Father, has given us a lot of things. He is very proud of us. When he is not going, he will come. He will give us a lot of things. He is very happy. 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 The president, who has given us a second meeting, local, I will go. He is very happy. John Lucas, he is very happy. I will go. Praise the Lord. President, John Georgie. I saw that he was very proud of us. He was very proud of us. He was very proud of us. The president, John Lucas. All the conferences were very happy. I would like to say, the next conference, you will be in Oklahoma. You are already ready. Georgie, John Lucas, he is the president. Praise the Lord. He is doing his work. He is doing his work. He is a group. He is giving us a lot of things. Georgie, that is why he is doing it. He is very proud of us. He is giving us a lot of things. Oklahoma, July 2020. In Oklahoma City, the meeting, praise the Lord. Everyone is ready. Other things, other things, we will talk about. Local representative, I am meeting. I am organizing it. I am very happy. You will be in the conference. I will be in the conference. You will do it. The president, the meeting in Oklahoma City, the coordinator of youth, he is the chief. He is very happy. He is very happy. He is very happy. You take one praise, God. After the local second meeting, they are there.
Praise the Lord. Good morning, all the faithful members of the Church. I am very grateful. Especially, the morning before, Father, he was very happy. I am very grateful. This conference, we are here. 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 I am very grateful. He is giving us a lot of things. We are grateful. I am very grateful. That is why, our city, our four churches. I am very grateful. 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 That is why, the churches, all the programs, all the faithful members. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. That is why, our financial, financial, all the things, we are here. That is why, I registered, I registered, I registered, I registered. I registered, registered. I registered, registered. That is why, I registered, I registered. I registered, registered. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. All the faithful members. I am very grateful. The secretary, I am very grateful. I went to transportation. They are three people. The three people, the name of the three, Saki Joseph, Sandhus Joy, Adub Yaprakam. Three people, very, very difficult. They are very grateful. They are very grateful.
John Lucas, he is very happy. He is very happy. He is very happy. I would like to say, I am very happy. 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 That is what I am saying. I am very happy. I am very happy. I am very happy. I have done a lot of things. I have done a lot of things. I have done a lot of things. I am very happy. I am very happy. God bless you. I will say something else.
Praise the Lord. The faithful members are very grateful. The faithful members are very grateful. All the faithful members are very grateful. I have registered. All the churches, all the families, registered. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. That is why, the fundraiser, the local, I am very grateful. I appreciate it. But they have brought us, and the National Executive Committee, all the help. Local committee, they are around. They are giving us a lot of things. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. I generally say, I will explain each one of the names. But as a local executive committee, once again, I want to thank you for all the families, all the members. And I also want to add one word to the youth, because when I was talking to them, they also put their effort for the financial part of our conference. I appreciate them also for contributing sacrificially towards the blessing of our conference. All the faithful members, all the children, all the faithful members, they are very grateful. They are very grateful.
I would like to say, I am very happy. 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 I am very happy.
Praise God. I enjoyed this conference as well. I'm sure Daniel will probably talk about it. So I just want to talk about this conference. It's in Oklahoma, as Pete Pendle said. One thing I want to say, a couple of things I wanted to say is, first John, chapter three, two, three is the actual theme. In summarize, it's pursue Christ for transformation. So the venue is actually going to be Embassy Suites in Oklahoma. We finalize the cost, we will get you the address and everything later. Flyers being finalized, kickoff meeting will be in November. We've already signed prayer, prayer time valves for the English side as well as the Malayalam side. We'll also have nationwide worship sessions after the kickoff is done, so in Houston as well as among the other cities, we'll be having that. The name for the English side, like we had here in Houston, Pray Conference, we'll be calling it Pursue Conference because of the theme. And we've already registered the agifnacouncil.org as the website. We'll be tying into the agifnac.org. And the each year conference after that will be the year and agifnac.com. So next year will be 2020, agifnac.com. The English session, so we changed the youth meeting to actually be English session meetings. We'll have good speakers, good worship leaders. We've got a bookmark and some suggestion cards up in the back, so y'all can please take that if you have some, if you have some time afterwards. And some of the local youth reps, I want to just mention Cheryl. Cheryl's here? There she is. Can you stand up for a second? So she's our local Houston youth rep, so please contact her. She will be getting in touch with all the different churches. And also, we have light and sound. Robin Johnson will be helping us out with that. Social media, Joshua Burgis, Persuader Korean. And photography, Aaron Reed, he'll be doing the photography there. And I believe, I think I covered everybody. So just make sure, everybody, if you don't understand or comprehend Malayalam as well, English session is available. It's not just youth, we accommodate all the ages. So I encourage everyone, as everybody mentioned earlier, come out to Oklahoma. God bless you.
Gloria. Thank you. I am very happy. National Executive, Sergeant George, Joe Convenal. Brother David Johnson, National District. Pastor Justin Sabu, National Youth Coordinator. He is not coming. He is very happy. He is very happy. He is very happy.
And he just gave us such great wisdom behind it, and he just let us live out our dreams. And we just thank you so much, and we could not have been in Congress without you. We love you and thank you.
I also do want to take this time to appreciate all the executive team and the elders and the local team as well, the uncle's, the uncle, the uncle. I love them, they were a huge help. I know there's a lot of certain situations that got a little chaotic. I'm very confident that I thank them for understanding and being patient with us despite those difficulties. And I want to just thank these guys for being just supportive, and I love these guys. God bless you all.
Good morning, God. Good morning, all the faithful members. National Executives, Secretary Benoy, Brother David Johnson, Joint Convenal Sergeant George, Pastor Sergeant George. Youth Coordinator, Justin Sabu. General Coordinator, Brother Thomas Orgis. And even Coordinator, Sergeant George. A local Coordinator, Pastor John McChenna. John Lucas brother, Georgie, Danny. So all the faithful members are very grateful. I am very grateful. I am very grateful. I am very happy. I have been in many conferences. I have not been in many conferences. So this conference, we are eleven, eleven churches. The pastors in the churches, the assistants. The pastors. Eleven, whoever comes, they have a chance. I am very happy. I am very happy. I am very happy. I am late. I am late. I am very happy. I am very happy. I am very happy. But I am very happy. 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 All the faithful members, they are here. The faithful members of the Church. 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 They are here. This conference, the people who have given us the blessing, they are very happy. This conference, they are very happy. They are very happy. They are very grateful. This conference, they are very happy. This conference, they are very happy. They are very happy. I am not afraid of this city. I am very happy. You all are here. I am happy. I am happy.